All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's seven thirty, I believe. I'm watching seven thirty. In attendance is Andrea Lombardi, Brad Yerkes, Steve Sanami, Mary Nixon, Dimitri Chicholsky, and John A B. Is A B. A member?
He wants it.
Now, okay.
That's me, but you've got enough people to hold them.
Yes.
To hold the meeting, so I'm gonna leave. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. So it's Brad Yerkes. I don't know if you can hear us, but you might want to unmute yourself if.
Yeah, hi, guys. I hear ya. Sorry.
Great.
No problem. Technology, but I'm here. I'm listening for a while, so I'm good.
Okay. All right. So, all right, first, I call the meeting to order. First order of business is approval of last month's minutes. Anyone have any comments, suggestions, or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Yep, all opposed? All right, no abstentions. I don't think you can. Motion passes unanimously. Second order of business is Andrea Lombardi. She's going to do the treasurer's report. Andrea?
Excuse me, excuse me, I just joined at seven thirty and I didn't hear what motion you had raised before seven thirty. This is Mary.
Yeah, it was to approve last month's minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I was gonna present the, or go over the summary of the budget. So we're starting the new fiscal year, and so far, one set of invoices have cleared for the clerk only. So our expenditures for the month of August, two hundred and thirty dollars. And right now, we are, that's current, current year total, excuse me, this month was one hundred and fifteen dollars. So remaining balance to date is ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The ARPA funds, A R P A, if you need to know, that's a project number thirty-seven. Year to date, we have expensed eight thousand, three dollars and seventy-five cents. The remaining balance, which needs to be spent down by December twenty twenty-six, is one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. We have encumbered two invoices to Fussin O'Neil. One is for three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, and the other one is for a hundred and thirty dollars. I wanted to respond to the request I had last month about exploring the various attorney fees and invoices, and where we're at with that. So what I can say is, I have been going through the clean water funds, but today I just got about an inch of reports to plow through. So I'm not gonna be able to have a complete report tonight, but I will have that for the next meeting, because obviously I just received the information. That's all I have for tonight. Oh, encumbered also, I want to thank Erica. She sent out the pump-out cards, and so those invoices we expect to hit this month. Erica works very fast, and very quickly, and very thoroughly, so we're really lucky to have her, and the cards went out.
Agreed.
Great.
Thank you, Andrea.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Andrea? Oh, Andrea, oh, are you talking about the request, information requested by Mary Daly last month about?
Yes.
How much, okay, that's.
Yes, that's what I was, yes, exactly.
Are there any questions for Andrea? All right, on to the next item, this chairman's report. So lots going on since the last meeting. I gave a presentation to the town as a town informational meeting, going over expenses. Again, there were people there that don't, either don't believe what I'm saying, or don't believe in the numbers. But I stand by those numbers. I believe they're accurate and true. The board of selectmen has not voted to move this referendum forward. I believe the outcome of that is going to be the D E P will award, or allow the three beach associations to begin work. And they can take full advantage of the fifty percent grant and loan forgiveness. I believe that we will be eventually forced to put in sewers, and it will cost Old Line more money, because the twenty-five percent loan forgiveness will probably have been removed by them. I think that it is irresponsible for the B O S to not move this forward to referendum to allow the citizens to vote. What they are arguing over, the seventeen point one million dollars referendum converts to an eight point five five million dollar loan at two percent compounded yearly, two percent V P R. Those numbers are correct. So what they're looking for is some magical accountant to determine what all the other costs would be. And I don't know of any person that can predict into the future, what ifs, what if Eastline does something, what if New London adds to their treatment plan. We will pay. That's, that's the bottom line. It's not much. I mean, it's, if, you know, combined, if they both, if Eastline and New London did a million dollars worth of work, it would be, I think it would add forty-two dollars per E D U, per year, no, forty-two dollars per E D U financed over twenty years. Forty-two dollars financed over twenty years for every million dollars. If, if Eastline and London did it, if just New London did it, we're only responsible for the New London portion of that, of that upgrade, which is point five percent. So I don't know where this is going. I don't think that we will be able to award a contract by October fifteenth, because the date to, to get a referendum is vastly approaching, and and the time constraints are, I don't see how we're gonna be able to do that. I think we have maybe a window of five days right now, by the time, if they voted today to, to go down with the referendum. So it's, it's, it's fast approaching the deadline. The C S A, we have assigned C S A. The D E P, I've been in conversation with the D E P and bond council, and apparently the D E P would accept the current C S A. There is no need for a new C S A, though. A new C S A that is better written, that handles what we're doing, would be would be wise, but the current C S A, according to the bond council, the way the current C S A is written, it does not harm the town of Old Line if we kept it. The entity that could be harmed is Old Colony. They're taking on all of the debt for the shared infrastructure, and, and yes, the C S A says we will owe twenty-nine point seven percent, but it doesn't say that the state is going to fund or roll that back twenty-nine point seven percent into our internal infrastructure. I've asked bond council to talk to D E P, as well as Old Colony Bond Council, to see if what I'm hearing is, is correct, and that the D E P is not requiring a new rewrite. I, I, I still believe that this project is, is warranted, that it, that it will save the sound view time and money in the long run. I know probably not in this generation, but in future generations, as the water table goes up, one more house is will have to just be abandoned, because there will be no way of putting in septic system. I also believe that Old Line will sewer those, those properties eventually at a much greater cost than would be done now. And I believe that the board of selectmen are putting all of the taxpayers and people of Soundview at risk. Because that's basically my report. So, does anyone have any comments, suggestions, or?
Question for you. So our deadline is October fifteenth, is that correct?
I believe that's the date that we have to sign the contract.
With the.
With our contract.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, of course, that could be extended if he wants.
Well, but as I know, I'm a plumber. As I know, whole prices going up by week. And if you're gonna pass this time, and even not sign the contract, is on those proposals we have. Those people who put those proposals are gonna give us new proposals. It's gonna cost more money, sure. And another thing that I was thinking about, what is the sound view each association? This is, this is proper, each property owned by old town. And the beneficiaries will be not only people who are gonna have a sewer usage on their properties, but also people who come to the beaches all around the town, and other people who don't belong to the town come to the beaches. This beach should be compensated for by people, I think, that using those beaches, that beach, public beach. Also, I made, I provided my calculation that if, if fifty percent of the, of the cost would be spread to people who live in the town, who know how much cost will be to the owners who don't have properties on the beaches, but using the beach, five dollars a month. Five dollars a month. They go, they will take half of the cost of the, of the construction.
Well, I've, you know, that's true, but then the taxpayers are subsidizing increases in value for people's homes. I mean, Dimitri, you can only charge what the assessed value increase is. So if someone's house only goes up or ten thousand dollars, we have to pick up the other sixteen.
I'm watching also prices of the properties on the beach, and properties of the beach. And those prices above million dollars, mostly properties of the beach, not on the beach. And look at the beach properties, the mostly of them were built a hundred years ago. And what value you're talking about? Because they have a sewer, that value?
Well, aren't you saying their value, their value will go up? How about someone that doesn't have any, they can't build, because they don't have no square. It's a septic, but we'll be able to build with.
What's wrong with saying that private beaches have a security guards on the gates? You cannot come to the private beach.
Okay, so, so this is something I read in the day after my meeting. I think it was Jude proposed that the town pay for all the road reconstruction. That would be an eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar savings to people. But why should the town subsidize people's increase in value of their home?
If you have your opinion, I'm taking, I'm saying my opinion, okay? If your opinion, if you would be living on a, on a shore where this gonna be like me, you would have different opinion, hundred percent. Now, you're saying something that your opinion, the property value goes up, and you're improving your value of the property.
Well, that's not my opinion. That's our assessor's opinion that, that we hired. The W P C A hired an assessor that said the, the property value will go up between eight and twelve percent.
What's wrong if people would take part of the cost for using the beach, public beach? What's the wrong, what's?
What does the public beach have to do with, with? I, I realize people going down there, some of the commercial properties are being charged three E D Us. That would be saying that they're paying their shit, and then they have to pay usage on top of that. But no one is going to that beach and walking in people's homes.
Yeah, you have different opinion, hundred percent, just a hundred percent opposite from my opinion. I'm saying my opinion that if beneficiaries will be people, they have pollution, okay? They have a pollution. If we are gonna get rid of pollution, people who use the beach are beneficiaries. Okay, so this is my point. And people, if they're gonna, if their cost would be like five dollars a month, is that a big deal?
What about the people that don't live in town that visit the beach? What about all those houses that rent?
This, this, this is another question.
They should be.
This is another question.
Brad Yerkes, because I'm a little frustrated with this whole process as well, like we all are.
Who is this? Brad Yerkes?
Brad. I moved up here ten years ago, and you know what? The privilege of living on the water is, is kind of special. And we spent a lot of money on putting a new septic system in, so we can do that. You're generational down there on the beach, and that's great, but it's been neglected for, for generations. And it's time to step up. I'm sorry, you know, you're lucky you live down there, but it's, it's something that you're very fortunate to have. A lot of people in the world don't, and I really feel that you gotta have to step up and, and think about it from a different angle, or a different trajectory, and that's just my own opinion. And also, I think the, the interview from the, the newspaper was a little lopsided, and I think that was unfair. I never was reached out to. I don't know who else wasn't on the, on the board. So I have a little issues with some stuff, but let's leave it at that.
Thank you, Brad. Dimitri, do you have, I mean, you can go on.
Well, the difference between private beaches and a public beaches is that more people using public beach than a private beach. Private beaches have a lot of spaces on the beaches, even in the best sunny day in summer. Public beaches are crowded. They're very crowded. They close the gate. They don't let people to come. People come from six in the morning to eight o'clock can occupy the beach. After that, it's closed. I live on the shore of, across the gas station, and I see what's going on every time. So that question should be brought in and considered. If maybe people would think this is not a bad, bad view.
All I can say to that.
I think it should be.
But all, it's not up to me to consider that. It's up to the town. It's not my.
You're our leader here, and you should, if you feel that should be brought this question, even if you are not supporting this, if you bring it to the public, and you hear what public will say.
Well, and the public, the public feels as though the town, Martin, and, and, and others feel that a good compromise for this project is for the town to pay for all of it. That's the compromise. I don't know what kind of compromise that is.
Take all of it, what I'm saying, fifty percent and maybe twenty-five percent. This will be.
Well, I mean, the town, and, and just to see you're clear, I read that thing about Jude saying they, suggesting pay for the roads in, in the day after my meeting, but Martha has also asked me if it was possible. So, yeah, it, it, they, the town, we can remove that item from, from our bid, and the town can, can bid it, I mean, or pay for it. I mean, the town, the town can do whatever they want. Dimitri, I, I serve the town.
You know what I'm talking about.
We serve it.
You know what I'm talking about. You just bring it up to the media and hear what they're gonna say.
I, 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 I guess, I don't think it's up to the W P C A to bring that up, whether or not the town should subsidize this. I think it's up to the elected officials.
This what he can bring to the selectman office. That's what I'm saying. He can bring it to selectman office.
The selectmen can just bring it up. I, I don't have to bring anything to. If, if, if the board of selectmen want to pay a portion of this or anything, they have their own mechanism. They, they, they have the funding, they have the budgets, they go to board of finance, they can do everything. They don't need my approval. Of course, I would take. Any money that someone wants to give us, we'll take.
I will just say my opinion.
Well, thank you. John, you have anything to say?
No, I just, again, again, my point was that if, if people feel that way, that the town should subsidize it, it's gonna be a process that goes to the select people, it's gonna go to the board of finance, and it's gonna go to the whole town to vote.
By your right.
Because it's gonna be sizable enough, and it's gonna have to go to a town meeting, and it's gonna be a budget item for it to hold down to vote on.
It is, and, and I can tell you, most of the people that don't live there are not gonna vote for it, because they don't, they, they're paying for their own septic system, which is compliant, and isn't under an administrative order from the D E E P. The W P C A, this group of people, our responsibility is to follow the direction of the town, and what the town has agreed to. Administrative order to move forward towards sewers, because that's what the, the state is asking us to comply with. We're not, we're not trying to beat up on anybody that lives in Soundview. I mean, I didn't leave the beach at Soundview to the public, which is the bane of all of this, right, to begin with. And I can tell you, there's not a lot of people that live elsewhere in town that necessarily go to that beach. But even if they do, it was left to the public, and that, that's, that's at the root of this problem. But the W P C A doesn't have the authority to determine who pays for this on the basis of the whole population of taxpayers in the town. We just don't. We do what the town has agreed to comply with. That's what we're doing.
Thank you. Cory, you have any comments or anything?
I do have a few comments, but I would like to have them with people that aren't present, so.
Who would you like?
Dennis and Mary, Mary, you're here.
I believe Dennis is there.
Oh, I'm here, I'm here. I'm listening to all of your viewpoints. I think the argument comes back, I mean, there is, I don't really wanna get into this discussion, to be honest with you right now, but we do pay for the school system that we don't use, which is a much higher tax than this would be. We do pay for the other community center, which we don't use, because we're not here for seven, eight months out of the year. So, but other than that, I really don't want to get into the middle of your discussion right now, but thank you for asking.
Well, I'm just curious to, this is to Dennis and Mary. The two of you were invited to the, to the W P C A to come up with other solutions for the system. And have you made any headway on that?
Yes, of course we did, and you know we did, and we presented them, and Dave Potts came, and really, his information that he shared wasn't received very well by this committee, because you had already made a decision to move forward with sewers. So yes, we did, and we looked at Westbrook, and Essex, and Clinton, and we came back to the table with that information. Wasn't well received, but that information is still on the table and is still out there. Thank you for asking.
Is there any other?
Thank you for asking. I'm, I'm not arguing these points.
We're, we're not arguing. We're, we're, we're trying to come up with a solution if we.
Hey, it does sound like you're arguing, Cory. It sounds like you're, you're looking for an argument, and I'm not tonight, so thank you.
Well, nobody's provided any other information other than a sewer line to be installed. So if we can't, if we're not gonna install the sewer line, what are we gonna install? Now we're at the last minute here to get any progress done, and we're passing up by millions of dollars, because we're procrastinating.
The D, if I may, this is Randy. The D E P has, has looked at the alternatives that were presented, and said they will not approve, they won't approve them. So again, it, it isn't the people at this table that, that are fighting an alternative approach, if, if it's usable. It's the, it's the state D E E P, that's the issue.
Right, Randy, so as in the industry that you're in, the alternatives to sewers have also come, have developed over the past fifteen, twenty years, when this project was first started. So there are new technologies out there that have been approved by DEEP, that are being used elsewhere. But it seems like you guys had already closed the book on those alternatives. You keep saying we looked at that fifteen years ago. Yes, you did. But things have changed in the last fifteen years, as anybody in any technology can assert. And again, I don't wanna get into an argument tonight. It, it is what it is. If it is affordable, we go for it. If it's not affordable, and the town doesn't make it affordable for the people in Soundview by picking up parts of it, mainly the infrastructure pieces, so that they can own and control the growth of the infrastructure later on, then that's a decision made by the town. Then it's not affordable. So we will see what happens. I'm not saying one way or the other. I look at the numbers a little bit different than Chairman Sanami does. I've done a lot of research on it. You can't just, I mean, let's go back and retest, like you did for Hogs Nest. What's going on with there? And please remember, as Steve said last month, I think, white sands was excused, not because they're, they were proven not to be polluting, but they were excused solely on cost. And here we are again, looking at costs. There are other considerations. Don't forget the impact here. I mean, saltwater intrusion, other things that we have tried to bring to the table before and have been ignored. Those things are real too. So again, like, I'm not trying to argue tonight. It, it really is kind of not in my hands. I think it's in the board of selectmen and DEEP. Also, we do not know what will happen with Miami Beach. We do know they came in on, I don't know, four, seven million over what they anticipated. We don't know what will happen with them. We do know Old Lime Shores just posted their bids today. They won't be in, there won't be a decision on them, I doubt, before October fifteenth. So that's a lot for the board of selectmen to consider, not knowing if two of our partners are in or out. So again, I trust the board of selectmen and the steps that they think that needs to be done at this point. And I think this board needs to also show respect to the board of selectmen. Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna mic myself now, because I'm done.
Yes, I, I think, I'd like to say, well, a little bit different than what Mary said to answer Cory. We had Dave Potts in. There are all, there are alternative systems out there that are not, that are expensive. And the viewpoint is DEEP believes that sewers are still less costly than those new systems. So there is an alternative, but DEEP does not buy off on that alternative.
So, speaking of alternatives, if this is if this project does not go forward, I think people are under a an illusion or perception that DEEP will still kick in twenty five, fifty percent of the septic system. And I can tell you, that is not in the cards. So when you're ordered to replace a septic system, it's on your dime a hundred percent. DEEP does not fund septic systems.
I I I
That's the difference.
So I I looked at that today, actually, Steve, and they do reserve a part of their clean water funds are for alternative systems, actually. It is, it is their direction.
Mary.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself again, I'm sorry, I I'm not getting into an argument.
I'm telling you that DEEP will not be funding any septic systems in Old Line. I'm telling you that. And I'm telling you that because I've been told that.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that information
They're not going
From your perspective.
They're not going to, they're not going to put their necks out and fund something fifty percent and then come back and fund something that they really don't want to fund.
So
And
if we're at almost seventy five to eighty million dollars for this project?
I don't know where you're getting your numbers from, Mary. It's not seventy five to eighty million dollars. I, number one, I don't know why you're very concerned with other people's costs, they don't affect ours.
Okay, I again, I'm gonna mute myself, I don't want to be part of it.
Well, I I I'd love to hear where you got seventy to eighty million dollars.
Off the Fosse and O'Neill sheet that you displayed at the last public meeting.
I didn't display the Fosse and O'Neill sheet at the last public meeting.
Okay, all right, let's continue, while you guys continue with your meeting and whatever is on the agenda, can we move? Thank you.
This is Dennis, I'd just like to make a make a point. This is a town project. The town was given an administrative order, not Dennis Maluzzo, not Dimitri Tolchinsky, not anybody else, but the town. This is no different than East Line, Waterford, New London, Norwich. These are, it's a town project, should be funded by the town, if in fact that's gonna do. And and the users, just like East Line, they pay their usage, they they pay their from their house to the street and usage, and that's it. They don't pay for construction, they don't pay for for repair. This is a town project, and until you guys get your head square that this is a town project, this town is going to fail on other things because I've been here my whole life and I'm seventy four years old. And I've been paying for a school system of with no kids and just have paid fifty seven million dollars on my back. You guys are coming off scot-free, everybody that does not live in the in the shoreline area. This is a bonus for you guys.
Hey, Dennis, I think you're absolutely very mistaken, okay? Because I don't live in the beach shore, but I live on the water and I had to put in a septic system ten years
Because you live in the mosquito alley.
Thousand dollars. And I don't have any kids either, so, you know, I think you gotta be a little more open minded, that's
Uh, Brad, I know where your house is. Those houses, those, those, that property years ago was condemned because it, because of the water and the closeness to the swamp. Just because you raised your house up out of the water, doesn't mean that you're not in a swamp.
Oh, so I live in a swamp now, huh? Okay, thank you.
That's where it was. That's where it was, it's always been a swamp alley down there. Anything near Catherine Drive and and heading towards, heading towards the water at the end of the street. So that's what I'm saying, this is, this is where you're, where you guys are coming from, I understand. I've been paying for the school system since I've owned my house for forty years and had had nobody here. So it it is, you have to, you have to take this, this beach thing out of your vocabulary. This is indicative of nineteen sixty four, where none of you guys were here. When the town wanted to take all of the houses in Soundview and portion them out to their friends. And the people in Soundview fought it in court and won. And that's what started all of this battle between us and them, and you guys are perpetuating it. And you're going to lose, you'll lose in the court and you'll lose in other ways. Unless you get your head square and do it the right way.
What have you proposed to us for another solution then, Dennis?
If 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 East Line pays for their sewer system into into New London, what should we do? What should the town of Old Line do? Pay for the infrastructure? And let the users pay for their house and their usage.
Dennis, Dennis, I don't believe the town of East Line is gonna charge their customers. I've done work
I'm telling you, my cousin lives in Giant's Neck Heights, rebuilt his house and just did it five years ago, and all he pays because he's on, he's on the East Line side of the house.
Sewers already there?
The sewers were already there.
Someone else paid for them then.
Yeah, his mother and father paid for the usage.
Right, after, after the infrastructure's paid off, you pay for just
You know, when, when a sewer line goes to to your street, you'll tie in too.
Of course I would, yeah.
Okay, you would. But instead, it's not heading your way. It's in our way, and they haven't proved anything. All they proved is, is they want to give New London more more money into their pockets so they can, so they can do whatever they need to do in the future.
So, so Dennis, you're getting a little off track and making accusations, I don't even know who they are, but you're making accusations that I don't think can be backed up by anything. So you know, I don't even know what happened in nineteen sixty four, but
Exactly, you weren't even born then. You were one year old.
I I was, yes. So, but in any event, your comments are noted. I'm I'm just going to say that in most communities, the end user pays for the infrastructure. So does anyone else have any comments? All right. It was a truncated meeting today because I have some personal
It it, excuse me.
Who, who are you?
I'm Bill Randazzo.
No, there's no public, no, no. There's no public comment, there's nothing. So, please, you thank you. It's truncated meeting because I have some personal items I have to do. If you looked at the agenda, if you looked at the agenda, there was no public comment, no new business or old business. We have a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion, this is Mary.
Also
To adjourn.
No correspondence?
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, meaning adjourn.